Hardly a better way to explore your city and to really feel a part of your city. And I know that sounds cliche, but it's really true.
These bikers are taking part in the final stage of Tour La Bange, an annual bike ride series put on by Councilmember Tom LaBange.
It's summer, summer in the city, and we celebrate the city. We got our bike series. This completes it with this ride here in Hollywood.
This is the sixth and last ride of the bike series. Over the summer bikers rode through several L.A. neighborhoods, including Sherman Oaks, Miracle Mile, Silver Lake, and Toluca Lake. Many say this event is a great way to get people together and on their bikes.
When you have a bike, you explore the city and you're energizing yourself. It's just the most sustainable and fun way to get around.
Police officers were out in full force making sure everyone followed the rules of the road and stayed safe.
We as police officers are going to have a contingency of six or seven officers who's going to be riding in front and basically be road guarding for the rider's safety.
As this bike tour comes to an end, many are already looking forward to the next one. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
Over the past couple of years, fitness zones have been installed in dozens of city parks. Anita Bennett reports that the workout areas have been such a big hit that some areas are already being expanded.
As families work up a sweat at the Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park, city leaders gather just a few feet away to celebrate the addition of four new pieces of equipment here.
One, two, three, four. Oh yeah. Good job. All right.
The newly installed machines are meant to encourage people to exercise more while taking advantage of city parks.
What we try to do is look at amenities, look at putting things in the park that you're going to use, putting things in the park that are going to make a difference for you, putting things in the park that are going to continue to enhance the quality of life of every park used in the city.
The workout area here in Sherman Oaks originally opened in January of this year. After noticing long lines to use the equipment, an anonymous donor teamed up with the Los Angeles Parks Foundation and City Councilman Tom LaBange's office to pay for more equipment.
I was just down the corner and I was staring and I thought, look at all these people. They're working out on these machines, they're exercising, they're sharing it with others. It's an experience, that's what a park's all about.
And there's more to come. Over the next few months, the city plans to add two new soccer fields here along with artificial turf. I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
The adult playground concept started in China and Europe. According to the New York Times, Los Angeles has been a leader in implementing that concept here in the U.S. One local baseball team has been in Los Angeles decades longer than the L.A. Dodgers. The LAPD's baseball team has been playing charity ball for 126 years. As Gil Reyes explains, it's a tradition that continues to help neighborhood kids.
There you go. Throw it back. Nice, good throw. One more time.
You've probably heard of officers in the field, but maybe not this field. Their duty, even here, to protect and to serve.
Yeah, excellent.
So what are you learning out here?
How to pitch, swing, keep your eye on the ball, and teamwork.
The LAPD baseball team has been playing competitive charity baseball since the 1880s, participating in police and fire department tournaments nationwide. It's made up of 25 sworn LAPD officers.
You guys know what pitching is?
Yes.
On this day, the officers are hosting a special baseball clinic for children at El Carrizo County Park in Silmar.
It's our way of getting back to the community. We have such a good opportunity to come out here and play baseball, a stress reliever from work.
First of all, we're going to get the kids together. We're going to tell them about keeping drug free and crime free. And once we get them, to talk to them about that, we're going to get them into baseball instructions.
During the game, okay? Let's say he's going to, I'm looking for the signals, okay? I'm right here, we're ready. And then once I say yes, okay? Can I come here? Am I set now?
Yes.
Yes? Can I move my shoulders?
No.
Okay, so what should I do next?
Pitch.
Pitch? Pitch the ball, right? Okay. So then I go throw it.
You know what? Our history is actually greater than the Dodgers. We have a 1887, this documented in the L.A. Times and the L.A. Herald, that those guys back then played charity baseball against the constables, which were the sheriffs at the time, and they played for a women's girls orphan home. And that was charity back 126 years ago. We didn't know much about it till a couple of years ago, but we have documented that and we want to continue that tradition.
Switch it. Right over left. Okay?
Their goal, to encourage teamwork in the children and to build their self-esteem.
Don't get mad when you make mistakes. You know what you do? You come back and do it again, right?
This confidence building appears to be working.
Who's better, the girls or the boys?
Girls.
With the boys and girls of summer spreading their wings. In Silmar, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
All the kids were invited to baseball clinic and the program was free of charge. It's shaping up to be another sunny weekend in Los Angeles and that means another opportunity to find your musical soul. It's all this week on Things to Do. On Friday at the Ford Amphitheater, enjoy two of the best West Coast bluegrass artists at this year's Bluegrass at the Ford. John Reichman is considered one of the top-ranked mandolin players and composers, while Laurie Lewis is one of the preeminent bluegrass and Americana artists of our time. Take in this rare opportunity starting at 8:00 p.m. at the Ford. It's located at 2580 Coangga Boulevard in Hollywood. For more information, check out fordtheaters.org. If you need a rousing way to wake up on Saturday, bring yourself downtown to Grand Park for an exciting outdoor drumming experience. It's called Drum Downtown Pulse and Pitch, and it's open to people of all ages and skill levels. Drums and percussion instruments are provided. It all starts on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in Grand Park. For more information, check out musiccenter.org. As Angelinos, we can all enjoy the world's diversity without ever leaving Los Angeles. This Saturday, the Los Angeles Public Library in Sherman Oaks will be the site of Inca music from Peru, a fusion of Incan Hispanic, Amazon jungle, and Afro-Peruvian music. It's an experience for the whole family featuring exciting rhythms and rare ethnic instruments. Co-produced by the Department of Cultural Affairs, the fun begins at 3:00 p.m. at the Sherman Oaks Branch Library located at 14245 Moore Park Street. For more information, call 818-205-9716. On Sunday, the California African-American Museum has a block party going on. Bring your dance shoes for a party on the plaza with a live DJ. All the fun starts at 1:00 p.m. and it's all free. The California African-American Museum is located at 600 State Drive in Exposition Park. For more information, check out caamuseum.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. On July 19, space-minded folks tracked to the Griffith Observatory to pose for an out-of-this-world photo. As Anita Bennett explains, it was a picture captured from millions of miles away.
On this sunny July afternoon, hundreds of people gathered outside the Griffith Park Observatory for an out-of-this-world photo shoot.
A spacecraft that NASA sent to Saturn is going to be taking a picture of us. How many of you didn't know there was a spacecraft at Saturn? I know, isn't that amazing? It's over 900 or it's close to 900 million miles away. That's 10 times further away than the sun.
That spacecraft is called Cassini.
Cassini has been in orbit around Saturn for something like, well, since about 2006. And it orbits the planet, it gets a close look at the rings of Saturn, the planet itself and its 60-some moons. And today, it's actually going to be in the shadow of Saturn, so we'll get a unique view of sunlight streaming through the rings of the planet.
And on July 19, it got a unique view of Earth as the planet appeared through the rings of Saturn.
There are not a lot of pictures of Earth taken from deep space, just a few. So this one will be a long, historic image and view, and all of us will be in it.
For 15 minutes, Cassini snapped pictures as people across the planet, including Griffith Park, waved. While you couldn't actually see anyone here on Earth, just a small blue dot, everyone was still beaming over the thought of being a part of this historic photo. I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
NASA plans to compare the new picture with one taken in 2006 to see how Saturn's rings have changed. Well, that's going to do it for today's show. Thanks for joining us. I'm Brian Ojima. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for another edition of L.A. this week. So long.
El está cansado de su trabajo.
Acaba de parar.
Sí, ha estado. Bueno, que fue la que usted dijo. De que se fue a Sacramento y se quedó con la persona de la soria. Él viene siendo el que tiene la posición, el salvadoreño, con la más alta posición en la legislatura del estado de California.
Israel Salas.
Ah, esa oficina. Ajá, sí. Él es el director de la legislación.
Pero bueno, pues ya no se han dado en los movimientos sindicales, en la parte de demócrata. Todavía no, pero...
Good morning, good morning. If you could please take your seats. If everyone could please take their seats. It is Friday, August 2nd. We're in the Valley and happy to be in the Valley. This is your Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Busque, Nocedio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, thirteen members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, Labange seconds. Next.
Commended to resolutions for approval.
Price moves, Krikorian seconds.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, let's do that now.
Item one is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District Five, notice for public hearing.
Okay, what we'll do with item one, can we hold that until Mr. Corretts arrives?
Okay.
Okay, now if you could go on.
Item two is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, you know what? Let's hold all of the items for one moment. And if we could prepare to take up item four. So can we find out if we are ready to move with item four? We'll do that first and then we'll deal with the other items. Okay, now on item four, I have three cards from the public. Why don't we start off with that? Is Mr. Walsh at downtown or is he here? Oh, so if I could have Mr. Walsh, Miriam Fogler, and Donna Pierman, please come forward. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 100,000 requests a month. You've been dragging your feet on this forever because most of you were for Cindy Montañez and the upset winner, which I predicted here a year ago on camera when Ms. Martinez was here. We're certifying Ms. Martinez's election. She should be here right now if she's not, and you should be seating her immediately after the certification. But Garcetti, who blacked the other candidate, is being real nasty and the Valley doesn't have her vote and he's stretching this out. Nuri Martinez won. Your candidate lost, and it was a landslide. Eric Garcetti's candidate lost. HollywoodHighlands.org. Okay, Miriam Fogler.
I was so excited and so happy. She adopted me and she's the best. I know we're going to have the best here for representative here and she's my friend now and I know I can count on her for everything. And I know that we're going to get the video conferencing back and then we're going to find ways to save money for the city with the video conferencing. And also the fact is that she only got 30-second coverage on the LA City View, which wasn't very good at all, and I'm very disappointed in that. But other than that, I'm happy for her and I've just been waiting for this very big day. We worked and worked and worked tirelessly for many hours in the office and she said, "Don't give up, don't give up, we're going to win." Even though Cindy said she thought she had it in the bag and Nuri won. And let me tell you, it was a lot of work, but we won. We won good because the fact is that we want to bring back the Valley representation and we want the Valley to have full voice here and we want to stay on topics in order to have a direct impact on the Valley, its economic, its employment, everything that's going to take place here. In fact, the matter of fact, that we need to have the power to come back to the Valley is very important to me, to have the Van Nuys, to be cleaned up and bring back businesses, mom and pop shops, et cetera. And I just look forward to working with her. I heard about our new Arleta fire station and I'm very, very happy, Nuri. I love you very much. And I'm, welcome to the Van Nuys and welcome to LA City Council. May God bless you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Pierman.
Anyway, this is going to be a great, great, great tank of the first Latina and a wonderful woman, Nuri Martinez. And we can clearly see that she was the winner. Because most people wanted to have Nuri. So you know, with this whole thing counting, we don't need to count it, we already know who won. This is ridiculous. Anyway, she's the first Latina and really great woman, a homeowner, a mother of four. She's people-oriented, she's great, and she's going to make CD6 proud. And now with the representative, we can get our video conferencing back because this shows that the Valley does matter and Van Nuys matters and Arleta matters and every place in CD6. So we got to now say that the San Fernando Valley counts and not just come over here once every other month. This is ridiculous. So anyways, I'm looking, I thought that was great with the fire station and I hope that you work well with Eric Garcetti and I hope he knows what a fantastic woman that's coming into CD6. And let's get that done and all the rest of it. If you're jealous, if it's just that Garcetti's jealous because Cindy isn't there, he should means he's going to be, this is going to be, might be starting of a great city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. Thank you one and all. Before we proceed, I will ask June if you'd come forward and maybe you could respond to some of the remarks that were made by Mr. Walsh that were slightly inaccurate. Explain the process and what the council's empowered to do or not to do.
Okay, very well. The city's election code, in conformance with state law, mandates that after every election, and this special election was an election as structured as any other, upon the unofficial tally taken on election night, July 23rd, that we then must perform a canvas or an audit, which we were able to complete quite quickly, and then present the certification of report to the city council. This is a legal step. The next legal step is that your honorable body must approve my certification of this election to make it official. That closes the election process, whereupon the incumbent may be sworn into office.
All right, thank you. There are no speakers in the queue, so I guess at this juncture we can vote to certify this election. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. Urgent forthwith. Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, now we still have some additional work to do.
Thank you very much.
Now we're going to get it.
I can't see the people now.
I know. Wow. I think I have to get sworn in first.
Madam Clerk, let's make this official right now.
Mr. Pres-
So the floor, Ms. Lagme, our city clerk, you have the floor. And gosh, those are some beautiful flowers.
Test, test, test. Mr. President, now that the council has approved the certification of election, the last remaining step is for the incumbent to take the oath of office. She has already signed all the appropriate paperwork, so we're going to, without further ado, come into the center over here and face each other and I will recite the oath and you will repeat after me and you will then be duly sworn in. So would you like someone to stand with you?
We get Jerry. Let's give Jerry a round of applause. The other half.
Oh, okay, okay.
You're going to do this first. You're going to do this first.
No way, she just speaks right there.
You want to hold your mommy's hand? That's nice. Ms. Martinez, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Raise your prominent hand, please. I, Nuri Martinez.
I, Nuri Martinez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Charter of the Constitution of the State of California. That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
And I will support the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And I will support the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of councilmember of the sixth district.
Of councilmember of the sixth district.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You are duly sworn in. Much congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, councilmember Nuri Martinez. Ms. Martinez, would you like to say a few words? You can speak from wherever you want. This is your house.
Well, thank you very much and good morning and welcome to Council District Six. I wanted to first start by introducing my parents, who I would not be here if it weren't for their support, their encouragement, and their just the wonderful family values that they instilled in me when I was a little girl. My father is Sidro Martinez, if you can just please stand. And my mother, Julia Martinez. My sister, Claudia Martinez. My husband, behind me, Jerry Guzman. And my daughter, Isabel Guzman. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, thank you very much. I love the fact that I get to get sworn in my own council district and we get to hold a council meeting here in Van Nuys City Hall. To all of my friends in the audience, my family, everyone who supported me along the way on the campaign, thank you so much for being here today. A lot of you live in my district. A lot of you have known me for many, many years. You helped campaign with me, you knocked on doors, you made a lot of phone calls. I truly appreciate you being here on this very special day. Thank you so much to my family and friends from Council District Six. You know, our message to our voters and our supporters, and if it wasn't for the voters of this great district that entrusted in me and getting me elected and making sure that they casted a vote for Nuri Martinez last Tuesday, it is very simple. The message to our community, to our residents, as a homeowner, as a mother, as a member that has to deal and grapple with everyday issues in this district, core services to our constituency is very, very basic. The fact that I ran into folks like myself, many of my neighbors, who often meet at my house once a month at our local neighborhood watch meeting, core services like street repairs, sidewalk repair, tree trimming, street services, these are all things that we all expect. We all expect from our city, we all expect from being taxpayers in this city. These are things that we need to fix. And one of the things that voters and residents of this district care the most is the fact that some of these services haven't been delivered for a long time. Some of these street services have not been delivered in some of the areas in my district. Areas like Sun Valley, Sun Valley where I call my home, where I have a home, where I'm raising my family, haven't seen it street repairing over 20 years. Communities like Arleta, where crime is of importance, where a lot of our wonderful residents are organizing and meeting on an everyday basis in their neighborhood watch in their neighborhoods. People like Diane Han and Al and Al Pananida. Get up, stand up, guys. These are wonderful, wonderful community members who have taught me not only the importance of community service, but these are the members in my community, in Arleta, that are doing everything they can to bring safety and making sure that services are delivered to Arleta. Panorama City, Panorama City where some of the, we've had vacancies, the Montgomery Ward and the Panorama Mall right next door to it and Panorama Towers. These are areas of redevelopment opportunities for the district. These lots and these empty offices have been vacant for almost 25 years. We need to do something about revitalizing Panorama City. Communities like Van Nuys and my friend Linda Mathers, who I plan to work with very closely on land use issues and planning issues so we can begin the revitalization of our civic center here in Van Nuys. Those are the things we need to do together as a community. Areas like, and communities like Lake Barboia, where I met a wonderful group of people, people that are raising their families in that community, people like Justin and Abigail, who I see in the audience, were raising our families right on the other side of the district. A teacher, a hardworking woman. You've taught me so much about myself, about what we need to do to improve the infrastructure in communities like Lake Barboia. So thank you so much for being here. And areas like North Hills and Panor- and North Hollywood, where we have an overabundance of, you know, issues of pollution, issues of inadequate land use in some of these communities, we need to fix that. We need to stop being the dumping ground, the dumping ground for the City of Los Angeles and we need to fix our issues and we need to do it together. And last but foremost, the issue of, you know, women's issues. The fact that I'm the only woman in 18 elected offices in the City of Los Angeles is something to be incredibly embarrassing because we can do better. Gentlemen, all of you have women in your districts that are doing great community work, that have been working behind the scenes in your campaigns, that are doing tremendous work in all the respective districts that you represent. We have to do more and we have to do better by electing more women to elected office in the City of Los Angeles and up and out this state. We have to do more. I call upon you to mentor and encourage women in your respective districts so that I'm not the only woman on this council, but that in the second round we get more women elected. We all owe it to ourselves. Thank you very much to my wonderful group of family members and friends that are here today. The work has just begun. We have a tremendous list of things that we need to get accomplished in my district and the City of Los Angeles and I cannot wait to get to work. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez. Okay, members, members, we are going to take a very, 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 very short break. There are 15 of us here today. It would be very appropriate to take the council photograph. Mr. Tom Labange will be the director of this photograph. So we're going to take a short break, everyone. Okay, let's give another round of applause to Nuri Martinez. Come on, everyone. She deserves it. Okay, if I could get the clerks and the city attorney to return. They escaped. No, they didn't get far enough, they were caught by the sergeants. Oh, wait, just Dion got away? Okay, what's the next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, council can either continue with the agenda or go to presentations.
Okay, I'm going to take one agenda item and then we're going to go to Mr. Bloomingfield for a presentation. So let's take up item two. I have two cards. Oh, in fact, I don't have to take the cards on item two. The public hearing has been satisfied. So let's just prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, I do want to take a moment and I really appreciate Mr. Weezer reminding me. We have longtime leader, president of the school board that is with us today. She still serves on the school board. She's a fighter and very tough. Let's give a round of applause to Monica Garcia. Monica, where are you? There she is, to my left. A very independent individual that's done a lot of good work. Mr. Krikorian. Okay.
Could I have you say hello to Camilla? She's coming. She's my deputy of arts, culture, and social cities.
Okay, now we also have a old buddy of mine, Dan Savage. Dan, chief of staff now to Adrien Nazarian, to Mr. Krikorian, to Dan's, your former chief's chief. Anyway, welcome. Mr. Bloomingfield, are you prepared to move forward with your presentation? Okay, let's, now we will give the floor to Bob Bloomingfield.
It's a pleasure to honor someone here today who is not only a friend, not only a pillar of the Valley community, but he is a real-life hero. Mitch McKnight, a resident of Council District Three from Tarzana, is an LA FD firefighter based out of Station 88 in Sherman Oaks. As a senior community emergency response team instructor or CERT program, firefighter McKnight has conducted Valley-wide CERT training classes for thousands of residents throughout the City of Los Angeles. He has always been willing to work with government offices, neighborhood councils, nonprofit groups, to conduct emergency drills and trainings specific to each of those groups. As he knows, it's a topic that's close to my heart, you know, ever since the earthquake in 94 and I was involved in the recovery of that. Earthquake preparedness has been a passion of mine and he and I have worked together on this issue since I've been in the Assembly and I started the V-Valley Preparedness Task Force. He rose to that occasion, has been helpful on that, and has just been fantastic, organizing people. Even on his free time, he goes out and he organizes CERT trainings and does all sorts of good things. And I'm grateful we were able to create CERT classes for my Valley-wide CERT outreach program to help get many Valley, as many Valley residents trained in CERT as possible. You've been doing a great job of that and we're going to continue to work together on that as we morph the V-Prep Task Force into a V-Prep Community Action Team, which will be the city version of that here in the San Fernando Valley. So with that, I just wanted to honor your contribution. So, with that, I just wanted to honor your contributions, and I have a wonderful certificate here that has been signed by all of my colleagues here in the council to honor you in that regard, and it talks about Los Angeles, saluting you, honoring your leadership, and so I give this to you. Please accept this as a small token of our appreciation.
I just wanna say what an honor it is to get this recognition, and it's helpful to me that I know on our city council, we have so many people that are as passionate about being prepared for disasters as we are with the fire department. So, thank you very much.
Okay, let's complete running through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Items three through six are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items three, five, and six.
Those are all the items, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes, and then Mr. Englander.
Hold item three. For a week. Hello? Item three held for a week, please.
Okay, item three, we will continue. Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Fuentes, because we just discussed this a moment ago, but apparently holding this over may have payroll problems, and so we hold it on the desk for now until...
Yeah, let's hold it on the desk for two shakes, and then let's sort this out. Okay, Mr. Englander.
You're good?
Okay, what else, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, would you like to return to presentations?
Well, I'd like to do that, and I, so the next presentation, Justin, is who? Gilbert Sidi, Sidi, are you ready?
Joined by Mr. Parks and Mr. Earl Ferrell.
And then, it's my understanding, you would be joined by Mr. Parks and Mr. O'Farrell? Are you ready? The floor is yours, Mr. Parks, Mr. O'Farrell. Could you please join Mr. Sidi?
Mr. President, tengo un gran honor hoy, este mañana, para presentar un colega de nosotros, una colega de otra ciudad de, del gran país del Salvador. Él es el alcalde de la ciudad de Santa Tecla. Mr. President, it is with great honor and great privilege that I am here with you this morning to present a colleague of ours, a colleague from another city, from another country. He is a mayor of the city of Santa Tecla of the country of El Salvador. My district, as you know, my district is rich in its immigrant population. Seventy-five percent of my population comes from either Latin America or Asia, seventy-five percent of them. Half of my population in my district is foreign-born. It is the entry portal for people coming to this city and coming to America, and part of that richness, of that diversity, is a very robust population from El Salvador. And so, we have today with us a person who, post-revolution, post the struggles for liberation and change and social justice in Central America, has chosen to be part of governance. The same challenges that we engage in on a daily basis are the same challenges that he engages in. He has led a strategic team to improve planning in his city. He was involved in efforts after an earthquake of 2001, which nearly devastated his city. He was led a group of strategic planning so that they could make sure that the earthquakes would not have the devastating effects that they've had in our city and in our state. And so, we have a young man who, well-trained, well-prepared, and who was steeled in the revolutions of social change in their nation, who has then gone forward with a firm commitment to governance, to democracy, and to peace in his country. So, it's with great honor. This recognition, there's a lot of words here. On behalf of the city, on behalf of our district, we welcome you. We look forward to engaging in a constructive dialogue, to share mutual experiences and the things that are important to us in local government, serving our people at the most basic levels of public service, of making sure that they have the infrastructure they need, that they have the social services they need, and that they have the sense of security and peace in their neighborhoods and their homes. We welcome you. Bienvenido. Mr. President, also, before I let the mayor speak, I want to acknowledge my assistant on all affairs related to Mexico, Central America, all matters Latin American, my assistant, Mario Betran, thank you for being here with us today, my consultant on these matters.
Gracias. Muy buenos días, estimados miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Señor presidente, para mí representa un gran honor estar acá compartiendo en el escenario del gobierno más cercano a los ciudadanos, el gobierno de las ciudades. Para mí, este reconocimiento que ahora se me otorga en ocasión de mi visita a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles es de muchas maneras un reconocimiento al trabajo, a la labor, al esfuerzo, a la determinación de las miles y miles de familias que se han asentado en esta hermosa ciudad, de esta nación de los Estados Unidos, para aportarle, para integrarse, pero también para mostrar lo mejor de cada uno de ellos. De hecho, mi reconocimiento a este consejo, a esta Ciudad de Los Ángeles, que siempre ha mostrado una enorme cercanía con nuestra familia salvadoreña, una enorme cercanía para multiplicar los vínculos de nuestra nación entre los que estamos dentro del territorio nacional.
Mr. Mayor, can I stop you for a minute? Mr. Sidi, we wanna be able to hear, so we have a translator, and it would be easier if the mayor would give her a break from time to time, so that she could come up and translate for us. I did not mean to ruin his flow, but on behalf of our listeners on Channel 35, and those of us on the council that do not speak Spanish, Madam Translator.
Gracias, señor presidente. Thank you, your honor, president. As a matter of fact, I wanna acknowledge my deep... To facilitate the communication between the citizens of El Salvador and to those that are here in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank personally to City Council Gil Sidiyo and Chief Parks for their help with our families. As a matter of fact, the city of Los Angeles was the first city to recognize the city of a day in the woman and man in Salvador. [Spanish] And after that, it was adopted in a state and federal level. [Spanish] For us, as a people from El Salvador, this is a great challenge. So, we can show the world the best of our city here and outside of the country. As a matter of fact, today, I have the greatest honor to be able to represent the power of El Salvador outside of my country. And today, we're celebrating a great festivity in my country, and we're now celebrating that as well in the great majority of cities in Los Angeles. August 6th is known as...
August 6th.
August 6th. Six, August 6th. August 6th, right? August 6th. [Spanish] The day of Salvadorian people. It represents our history, our identity, our culture. As a matter of fact, I wanna make sure, I wanna make myself available as a leader of national level. [Spanish] So, I can continue strengthening the links. [Spanish] Of positive relationship among our countries. It's very special congratulations to the new councilwoman. And God bless this city council. And God bless this beautiful city of Los Angeles. [Spanish] Thank you very much, and I thank everybody.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quickly here, I just wanna say, whether you migrated to Los Angeles from Oklahoma or whether you immigrated to Los Angeles from El Salvador, you're an Angelino, and I'm just so honored to be part of this recognition today, and I just wanna let folks know that in my East Hollywood neighborhood in the 13th District, sixty percent of the Latino population is of Central American descent or heritage, and of that, a large plurality are from the great country of El Salvador. And I also wanna recognize my legislative director, David Geron, who is a Salvadoran. And yes, David, I don't know where he is. There he is.
Oh, yeah, give him a round of applause. He's a fine young man, Mr. O'Farrell. He's a fine young man.
And I'm very proud of the work David is doing on behalf of my constituents in the 13th District. So, today, by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor, do hereby declare August 6th, 2013, El Dia del Salvadoraino in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you and congratulations. Felicidades.
Thank you very much, and I wanna thank the mayor for being here, and also Gil and Mitchell on this issue. We also have a large El Salvadorian community, and having the pleasure of visiting that country a while back, it is a very beautiful country, and having also worked with the El Salvadorian police during the earthquake several years ago is something that we tried our best to give some aid during that time. We only had one hiccup while visiting El Salvador. While we were setting up our plans to visit, we misread the temperature and realized later, as we were taking out those overcoats out of our baggage, that it was Celsius as opposed to Fahrenheit, and so that was our only hiccup. But one of the things we wanted to do today is that fifteen years ago, the city of LA started a tradition of honoring El Salvador Day in the city of Los Angeles. Just recently, and although it took us a couple of years to get there, we just honored the El Salvadorian community again by creating the El Salvadorian corridor on Vermont Avenue between 11th Street and Adams, and so that's something in which we're very pleased to acknowledge again because of the large population here, as we proudly say over and over in our city, that we have about 130 languages spoken in this city, but we also pride ourselves in the fact that we have the second-largest population of every country other than their home country, and so we're pleased to honor them. We're gonna ask Raul and Sauber to come up, because we'd like to present them with the resolution.
Now you're blocking.
This wasn't my intention.
I'm up. Sorry about that.
You took my plaque and blocked it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you can keep the frame.
I did not, I think.
Whatever. He's gonna talk to his dad.
Good morning, councilmembers, ladies, gentlemen. To me, it's a pleasure to receive this in the name of Unicóndex, Unidad de Salvador, Unión de unidades del del Salvador. Nosotros, I was gonna say it in English, I would like to say thanks to Honorable Bernard Park for his all support during we're celebrating El Dia del Salvadoraino in his area outside the Coliseum. I would like to say thank for his support. We also would like to say thanks to me, Honorable Gil Sidiyo, for support, the resolution at the state level in California. And of course, I'm gonna open the invitation for him to be for next year, 2014, our capital mayor for our celebration. Also, I don't wanna kidnap this history. To me, behind me, I have the men who invented and who wrote this El Dia del Salvadoraino for us. El Dia del Salvadoraino is not just the name. This is making us with body in United States. We are people who work in this country. We are honest people. Also, I want invited to me another co-founder of El Dia del Salvadoraino, who is a Guernón Moroccan, who is behind me, and many people who was, like Isabel Carranza, who was on that team too, that we have to recognize. I don't try to kidnap the history because that the way that it is. Thank you, and I'm gonna give it chance to Honorable Governor of Oaxaca, Salvador Gómez Gómez, who is a hybrid product of our country, because he knows, he play with the two cultures, which is America, North America, and El Salvador. Thank you for everything and appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Good morning, president, and all the members of the council member here in Los Angeles. I'm Salvador Gómez Gómez, humble boy to cross Tijuana border in 1980 and learn from you guys all the way, all the way to take... you guys all the way or the way to take care of the communities. I became a community organizer here and after 30 years serving here as a community organizing, and now I'm serving as a governor in El Salvador. And it's a pleasure for me to come back to the City of Los Angeles because one day, in a crazy idea, I proposed to the table of Salvadoran American National Association to create and found El Dia del Salvadorreño in the United States of America. Thank you very much for your help, for your great example or greatness. Councilmember Bernard Park, thank you very much for your support in eight straight years celebrating El Dia del Salvadorreño in the District A beside the Coliseum. Thank you very much. I love you so much.
Okay, before everybody leaves, I've got Mr. Weezer followed by Mr. Labaj. Mr. Weezer.
And I just simply wanted to congratulate everyone who helped put this event together. We all know how active the Salvadoran community is here in Los Angeles. After a civil war and much struggle in their own country, you know that many of them have come to the United States for a better life. And through that activism, through their involvement in the local communities, we have seen their communities become better for that. So congratulations. Felicidades al pueblo y al Dia del Salvadorreño. Felicidades.
And Mr. President, I just wanted to make mention, members, since El Salvador is a great sister city of ours, a very active community, it's very exciting to see a delegation come from the country. And this is the official map of our sister cities, which I will share with our guests. And thank you for all their cooperation and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labaj. Okay, let's move on. That ends our general... I mean, that ends our presentation portion of today's agenda. So if we can move on to item three, it is my understanding that Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Weezer have worked out concerns where relates... not Mr. Weezer, Mr. Fuentes have worked out issues where it relates to item three. So, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're prepared to move forward on item three. There is an amending motion, item 3A, that should be on everyone's desk. And with that amendment, we're ready to go.
Okay, good. We have a few cards on this. And I heard you over there mouthing off, Mr. Weezer. I want you to know that. Okay, Arnold Sachs, John Walsh, Rick Nightingale. Come on, general public comment, come on. Rick, if I called you, come on. Whoever gets to the mic first. Mr. Nightingale, come on. No, but not... Mr. Nightingale's path is not blocked. He can come right through here and we can get started. Okay, Rick, you're gonna lose your speaking time. Okay, Mr. Sachs, you're there. Tell him, Donna.
Yes.
Go right ahead, Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Couple things about this item, and that's not included, but most important, the fiscal impact statement that's included at the end of the item that states neither the CAO or the chief legislative analyst has completed a financial analysis of this report. And so I'm wondering why not? You're hiring these positions, you're doing the budget, the budget has been worked out, and yet you don't have the financial analysis available from the CAO or the CLA. Doesn't make sense. The budget was discussed back in, what was it, May? April, May? One of those hearings, Mr. Krikorian? And then again, there's part of the budget hearing discussed the need for the firemen, the extra firemen for the shortfall that wasn't addressed in the budget hearings. And again, with the budget, the additional funds that come into the city council, district of the offices that you hold, the AB 1290 funds, bus bench revenue funds, the pipeline revenue funds, the billboard revenue funds, all these funds that could be available, as Ms. Martín has mentioned in her acceptance speech, to fill potholes and repair streets and do the things that are needed within the districts, but aren't accounted for in any of the budget discussions. Doesn't make sense. Only part that really doesn't make sense again is there's no financial analysis of this item. But I'm sure there was a financial analysis of the parking, the broken parking meter discussion you had on Wednesday.
Yes, Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I don't need two minutes. What this is, is a feather bedding vote. They voted several years ago for an upper limit on how many people can work on the budget, how many people they can hire. This gives them the authority to hire many, too many people to work on the budget. Any way you slice it, it's hundreds of millions of dollars over budget, underfunded. What's happening now is a mess, and the whole United States of America realizes when they walk and trip and fall on our sidewalks, how terrible, how the money has been wasted, and there is no money for feather bedding positions. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I agree with both the gentlemen just before me regarding this, that every time you come off of the budget, it's a budget but no numbers. Everybody comes along and they add this and add that, and none of it makes sense. That's the object, it's a shell game. You go from one to the other, the other to the other, and point the finger at the different people. For instance, years ago, when we turn around and bought gas, it stated right on the gas thing, this is road tax. Which road? Streets! But no, you people can turn around and take that money and use it, put it in general fund and use it any way you want. I live over here in Sherwood Forest, over here in Northridge. We can't even drive down a street because it is so bad, the roots are coming up six inches out of the ground. And then my councilperson says, well, we can't fix that because that can turn around and cost... we can fix four other streets for what that'll cost, so we're not gonna fix it. I've been fighting this for five years. It's just ridiculous that how... if you, like I said before, if you people were a business or corporation, you'd be in jail for embezzlement and anything else you want to add to it because you don't do what you're supposed to do, because you shuffle the money like it's your own, and you won't have... everybody has their only little pet peeve that you want to do, but you ain't taking care of the public. Look what they want to do about the streets, I mean the sidewalks. They want you to pay half. Now you ran out of money because now we're fighting over who you're gonna fix the sidewalks. I mean, come on. This is what it was set for. But no, you have all this money to set all these programs up for the needy and so forth, but us taxpayers that pay the taxes and so forth, we don't get diddly squat out of you people. But no, you have a program that you can turn around and build apartment buildings and so forth for the needy and the poor. When I grew up, my family took care of our family. I had family that needed problems, and we took care of them.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I suppose I should have introduced this matter so that the public speakers would know what we were exactly voting on. This is not the budget. The budget is completed. This is the Personnel Authority Resolution, which every year needs to be passed in order to continue to employ the employees of Los Angeles. It is exactly consistent with amending motion 3A. It is exactly consistent with what we spent weeks and weeks and weeks working on in full public view, with full participation by the public in approving the budget. There's nothing any different in this than what was approved by this council, signed by the mayor when we approved the budget. This is not the budget. It is the Personnel Authority Resolution that we need to have in order to continue employing our employees. I ask for your eye vote.
Felipe, you're good? All right. So let's prepare to vote on this item, Madam Clerk. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, I love that, fifteen. It's been a long time. Let's move to item five, called Special by Cards, Marian Fogler, Arnold Sachs, John Walsh, Rick Nightingale. Okay, let's go. Go, Ms. Fogler, go.
Yes, hi.
Hi.
You know, the commuting downtown is hectic. I know I'm a little off topic, but we can have the charter bus to take people, anything to get the video conferencing off the ground. My representative...
Mr. President, this is nowhere close to this item.
You have to stay on the subject. We're on item five.
Well, anyway, I'd like to see charter buses to take people down to the, you know, different... like, I know somebody who owns a boat, and he would love to take kids. Is that what it's about, or charter bus taking people on field trips with each district? Okay, sorry, I'm done then.
Okay, who's... Okay, Mr. Walsh, come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Or go to J. Walsh Confidential. Okay, this is just for charter buses, this is a slush fund, just for one council manic district. Okay, it's $1,176,025 to the nearest quarter. This is a motion by Parks and O'Farrow. Multiply this times 15. Now, deny what I'm about to say, which is that three years ago, the amount of money you were spending on charter buses was one-fourth of this. It has quadrupled in three years. It's out of control, this whole charter bus thing, and you've got it figured out to the nearest 25 cents. Don't make me laugh. HollywoodHighlands.org for the dirt.
Next, Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Exactly, $1,176. See, we have a financial analysis on this item, but we didn't get one on how much it costs for the employee of the city employees. But it's taken from the unappropriated balance fund to be returned to the general fund. So you have an unappropriated balance fund that's available to all the council districts in addition to other funds. So how much is left in the unappropriated balance fund... balance of the balance fund to be returned to the general fund, or is it allocated proportionately? It's just a simple accounting measure and a simple accounting question. This is a balance fund, unappropriated as it's labeled, has a certain amount of money in it. How much is available to the council offices?
You're done? Okay. So that should be it on this item. Madam... Mr. Krikorian? Okay. So let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, now, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. At Wednesday's council meeting, item number 45, council approved the payment of judgment in the case entitled Blackstone versus City, council file number 13-0892, and it was sent forthwith to the mayor. Just yesterday, plaintiff's counsel notified the city attorney's office of the need to change the payee information in the instructions due to the payment's payment of an outstanding lien. So because this item was sent forthwith, council must first suspend the rules, then reconsider the item, and then amend the payment instructions to provide as the city attorney will recite to us.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, what must we do first? Suspend the rules?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's vote to suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Thank you. And now it's reconsideration. So now we'll be voting on reconsideration. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, now, Mr. City Attorney will be voting on the matter as amended by Mr. Krikorian within the next... or no?
The city attorney will need to recite the...
Recite, then, Mr. City Attorney.
...payment instructions that will be amending.
Recite the instructions.
Include.
Okay, thank you. The matter should be amended so that the demand on said funds shall be in the amount of $1,081,000... $81,262.44 plus interest at the legal rate and made payable to the law office of Gregory W. Smith and Blaine Blackstones.
Okay, then, let's move forward. So, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Do we want to move this forthwith?
Yes.
And we'll do this forthwith.
Try it again.
Mr. Parks. Number five, forthwith at the request of Mr. Parks. Mr. Krikorian again, what did... forthwith on number three as well. And now we're doing item six, called Special by Cards, Arnold Sachs, John Walsh, and Rick Nightingale.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sachs. This is a quimby fee item. This will generate quimby fees for this tract item. And I would just point out that a couple of news stories. This is from the downtown news from February 18, 2013. Quimby fee... Quimby Funds Fiasco. In the fall of 2007, mentioned of the $120 million that the city has collected in quimby fees, nearly 77.5 million was unspent.
Mr. Doesn't this not an item about quimby fees? It just mentions quimby fees. This is a final tract.
Okay, Arnold, just kind of stay on this title, the subject.
He's exactly right. It's not an item on quimby fees, but quimby fees make up an important part of this item. Because quimby fees represent parkland for the...
Let's stay on the item.
Okay.
I know where you're going, but...
The item is a tract map. In this tract map, is there any part of this portion of this tract map that's converted into parkland for the public to use? Is it strictly residential development? Is it strictly housing development? Is it low-income housing? Is it low-income senior housing? Is it industrial? Is it any number of things but exclusive of parkland? Does it include... city has gone to parklets in an effort to create more park space? Does it include that in the tract map? When you do these tract maps, and you mentioned quimby fees are gonna be generated, do the tract maps in and of themselves show a portion of that to be used for parks?
Okay, next speaker.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. There's only one mention here. These tract maps must be approved before property can be sold. There'll be a tract map for the Tribune when they sell that poisoned property. Okay, whenever they do this, the state government passed a law that the developer has to give a certain amount of money based on the deal to the city or the local entity for parks. The gentleman in the legislature who passed that, which was good, was named Quimby. Okay? That's the only thing that has to do with it. There's $27,000 here on the final tract map for this property at Laurel Wood Drive, and there have been, yes, very little of this money ends up in parks. It's somehow... It somehow, it somehow disappears into your bureaucracy. And we are asking you now for a complete audit and a presentation on how much money in the last five years you have received from this special tax, this Quimby Fee developer tax, and how it has been spent. Now, you want to hear the people that get real, real silent when I ask for an audit or ask for actual facts, where they have to put it in writing, because they'll lie and they'll lie and they'll lie. But they shut up when you ask for it in writing.
Next. Next speaker. Rick, aren't you on, you're not on this?
Yeah, when you dig on this track map and that, I don't know, maybe I'm taking it wrong or whatever, but do they ever tell you what it was all going to be for regarding, like, apartments or housing or, like, Sacks, parks? And divide it up to find out exactly what this is going to entail of who's living there or what's going to be built and so forth? I mean, I've never seen anything about it, and I'll have to be truthful, I don't, I read the paper and I listen to other things going on and I watch the council on TV, and I don't hear about it. So I just don't know. Do you people ever do that, or do they do that when they make out a track map? I mean, and tell you except for from street to street to street to street, this is what we got and that's it? I don't know. It would be nice if you, that we could get some information on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there are no speakers on the queue where it relates to this item. So, Madam Clerk, could we please prepare to vote on this? Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, that brings us now to item one. If I could ask Mr. Labange to come forward. I think we have a Michael Strater, Wolfgang, hey, Labange here, I'm going to let you pronounce. I got the next one, Jerry Brown. Okay, I know I'm right on that one.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Michael Strater. I'm president of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1442. I'm here to speak in opposition to the issuance of the liquor license to the Target Department Store located at 10861 Wayburn. I'm here speaking on behalf of Local 770 and Local 1442. Our union members are represented here in the back with the appropriate yellow-colored shirts on or orange, whichever, you can figure that, that color out to be. But anyhow, we join as well with the Westwood Neighborhood and Community Councils in opposing this. I wanted to point out to the city council that at that very same location, 10861 Wayburn, we have a Ralph's Grocery Store there, which is a union grocery store, and right near there in Glendon, we have a unionized Rite Aid drugstore. They both sell spirits. And I know the city council here stands and has stood for livable wage for the citizens in Los Angeles. Livable wages plus decent health and welfare and decent pension benefits. I know that you stand for that. And that's what the Ralph's Grocery Store provides to the 150 members that 770 and 1442 has at that Ralph's location, as well as the 35 employees, members that work at the Rite Aid right there. They both sell spirits. And by allowing Target Department Store to have this license to sell spirit, every dollar that is sold, every dollar's worth of spirits that is sold in the Target Department Store is a dollar less than sold in our union stores. And as you know, our members who have a livable wage, their weekly hours are allocated by the sales in those stores. And what's going to happen here, Target Department Stores, just for your information, is a notoriously anti-union corporation. There are pending federal labor charges against them constantly. They do not pay a livable wage, they do not provide decent health and welfare benefits, and we urge a no vote on this.
Jerry Brown, next speaker, followed by Wolfgang Keith.
I'm Dr. Jerry Brown. I'm president of the Westwood Neighborhood Council, which has, represents 60,000 stakeholders, and I'm a member of its land use committee. You are here to decide whether the City Target Store in Westwood is to be granted a CUB for the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption because it is a public convenience and necessity when there are three other locations for such within 100 feet of that store, and when granting that CUB means that you are failing to abide by specific law which should be governing your decision. The Westwood Neighborhood Land Use Committee voted and the board unanimously concurred to deny the application to the Westwood City Target Store to sell alcohol for off-site consumption. The council's vote reflected its support of its land use committee's default position on all applications to it, namely that the laws which are in place are to be enforced because granting exceptions to the law on a case-by-case basis is inherently unfair and ultimately destructive to the city's entire planning process. The issue is now before you because the area planning commission failed to abide by existing law. The deciding votes were cast by one APC board member based upon her poll of several friends and by another member because his wife thought it would be a convenience to her even though she did not live anywhere near this City Target Store in Westwood. City Target Stores are not regional stores, and their business model is to focus sharply on the needs of the particular community where they are located. There is law governing the number of allowable sites within a given area which are permitted to sell alcohol for off-site consumption. Do not nullify the law and do not diminish the city council's legitimacy in so doing. Do not set a precedent from which there can be no possible retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And now we're going to call on Mr. Wolfgang Keith. Thank you.
I'm Wolfgang Feith, a 44-year resident of the Northwestwood Village. I'm a member of the Westwood Community Council and founder of the Northwestwood Village Residents Association. I respectfully request that the city council denies the Westwood Target application for permit to sell alcohol off-site, which is the sixth permit in an area that is limited to five. Because this permit would exceed the number of permits for the Westwood Village, it would set a very dangerous precedent. That is why this request is opposed by the larger Westwood community represented by the Westwood Neighborhood Council and the Westwood Community Council. And the request was denied by the city zoning administrator for those same reasons. What is at stake here is a request by the Westwood City Target Store for a sixth permit to allow off-site sales of alcoholic beverages in an area that's limited to five. There's absolutely no need for this Target Store to sell alcohol in that location. In the same building, only one floor up is the Los Angeles, the very large Ralph's Store, and across the street, in the very same corner, are a large Rite Aid store and a Trader Joe's Market. All three of them are already offering full line of alcoholic beverages, and the UCLA campus with 15,000 students, most undergraduates of them underage, most of them just a couple of hundred feet away. Also, since the Ralph's Store with a union labor force is just one flight up in the same building from the Westwood Target Store, granting this license would result in completely unfair competition to non-union Target Store. I understand that in order-
Thank you very much, Mr. Stephen Resnick for the Westwood Homeowners Association.
Good morning. Stephen Resnick, president of Westwood Homeowners Association and also secretary of the Westwood Neighborhood Council. Not one single Westwood community group supports this request. The Westwood Neighborhood Council, as you previously heard, unanimously passed a motion to oppose this. You have the community impact statement. And the Westwood Homeowners Association also unanimously passed a motion to oppose this request by Target. You need to know that no UCLA student representative on the council is in favor of Target's request. As one UCLA student representative stated when we voted at our neighborhood council, we need Target to sell shoes, not alcohol. This is most definitely not a one-stop Target Store, contrary to their claims. And as you previously heard, the city zoning administration denied Target's request. And again, it would be an unprecedented sixth alcohol permit for the first time in the history of Westwood. Three existing licensees now sell a full line of alcoholic beverages within 100 feet of Target and five off-site retail outlets within three blocks of Target. To now give to Target what has been denied to other responsible retailers would be obvious favoritism and would open up the city to future lawsuits that the city was acting in an arbitrary and capricious manner. Your approval would open the door to more requests for alcohol permits in Westwood Village. How could they be legitimately denied when you approved this one for Target? Our Westwood Neighborhood Council and my association, the Westwood Homeowners Association and every other Westwood organization urges you to deny this unjustified request. Please support our community and vote no. Thank you.
Adam Swarth, SWARTH. Thank you, Adam.
All right. Good morning. My name is Adam Swarth, and I'm a UCLA student and a member of the Westwood Community Council. I'm here to speak in opposition to granting Target this request to sell liquor. As a resident who lives right across the street from Target, I shop there regularly, and I know there's a lot they don't sell. They need to be selling more sports equipment, they need to be selling shoes, they need to be selling things that are useful to the community and that people want. Meanwhile, there's a huge oversaturation of alcohol already. Believe me, I know that as a student, it's very easy to obtain alcohol in Westwood. There's no issue of public convenience or public good here. It's a matter, it's, there's no, there's no convenience that is added by this. And in addition, many residents of my building are already complaining about the large number of alcoholics that hang out near Target right now. They make people feel uncomfortable, especially a lot of foreign residents of my building feel very uncomfortable with all the alcoholics there. I can only imagine that if Target begins to sell inexpensive alcohol, that this problem will only be increased, and people will be feeling even more uncomfortable hanging out in Westwood Village, which is supposed to be a hub of life in this city. So for those reasons, A, for the, because of the oversaturation of alcohol in the community, B, because we need Target to sell other things that actually help the community, and C, because of the threats to the community coming from alcoholics and making sure that our community is safe, I highly urge this council to reject the idea of Target selling alcohol in its Westwood Village location.
Thank you, Adam. Ryan Krebs, Ryan Krebs.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Ryan Krebs. I'm a 2012 graduate of UCLA, a member of the Westwood Neighborhood Council, and a resident, actually, across the street from the location of the Target. And I urge you all to vote no on this measure. Here's why. As a resident assistant at UCLA a couple of years ago, I was always asked by my residents, Ryan, where can I buy so-and-so? And there was a lot of items that aren't available at Target, such as shoes. I would have to tell them, well, you'd have to go out of Westwood to get those items. We want them to stay in Westwood where they're able to purchase those items. Because the real public convenience and the real necessity in this case is not alcohol, it's purchasing everyday items that students and residents of Westwood need. And it's for these reasons that I respectfully urge you all to vote no on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Stefan, I want to say Saden, Stefan from the Westwood Community Council. Forgive me for mispronouncing your names.
My name is Stephen San. I'm the chairman of the Westwood Community Council. Our council voted unanimously to oppose this unjustified request. We urge you and join with the entire community and ask that you vote no. You've heard this corner is oversaturated with three. Target's suggestion that this corner with three existing outlets does not provide convenient enough access to alcohol is frankly ridiculous. It turns logic on its head. Unfortunately, our council office, with whom we normally work very closely, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate our council member, the community is here and the council office is here. Why is that? Our councilman, Mr. Coretz, he is a very honorable man, and he is a man of his word. We all know that. And apparently, about two years ago, Target approached him and said, we want to come into the district, we want alcohol there, will you support us? And he said he would. We know that because in December 2011, his deputy came and testified to that. Target, at that point, had never even approached our community. They didn't approach the neighborhood council, no one. And that's why the council office is here and the community is here. But each of you 14, you also made a promise. You made a promise when you were sworn into office to uphold the law, to do the right thing for the city and to protect the city from liability. And what is that liability? It is the liability that would come from an arbitrary and capricious decision. When Savon and Walgreens and Famima and CVS have all been denied the identical request, you all know Mr. Ben Resnick, he's a great land use lawyer, we all know him. If I'm Ben Resnick, this is the Ben Resnick Full Employment Act. Because anytime someone wants alcohol, they will hire him and he will march into a court and say, your honor, look what the city does. They favor Target and they deny this client. He's going to win that case over and over again, cha-ching, cha-ching, damages to the city. I would urge you, allow Mr. Coretz to keep his promise to Target, we're disappointed in that. He's going to vote, but we urge you to please vote no.
Rick Nightingale from the San Fernando Valley. You pass, Rick. Thank you very much. John Walsh, Hollywood, California. John, you're out of time, so just say good afternoon, I'm sorry, John.
John Walsh, against the alcohol.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Sharon Brewer. Sharon Brewer still here?
Sharon Brewer on item number one, the Target Retail Store. After listening to the public make comments, you definitely shouldn't vote for this because they've taken and made, determined that there's an oversaturation of liquor stores and availability. So there is no need for public convenience because they already have it, and the necessity, I don't know about needing more places to buy liquor. The only point that's here is that Target wants to make money, and they don't care how they get it. And I just find it really strange that with liquor licenses, that there is a public convenience needed or the necessity. So it's, it's just the mighty dollar, and if there's an overabundance of places to buy your liquor, then you need to actually cut down on it, and if there's a need for more product at Target, I don't go there, then focus on what Target should be, a family store where people can go and get stuff and, you know, leave the liquor to someplace else. Thank you.
I want to say Sarah Sterns, is that correct? On 91301, Sarah? I apologize, Sarah, I'm Tom Labongi, so you could-
I apologize for that. Nice, face to face. I was at the meeting last week to speak on the liquor license thing, not to tell, I said, I'm not here to tell you how to vote, just to, so I could know that you knew the math behind every outlet that sells alcohol based upon the numbers of the study that you guys commissioned, the council did, the numbers came back, the violence, the child mistreatment, the suicide rates of people based upon the density of alcohol outlets, every single one of them. I was urging you also to embrace that every single vote is now an expression of your intent. We all got to start over, this is the first vote of the rest of your lives. So nothing's ugly yet, but actions are now mathematically sinister. I know that, that's why I'm here regularly now, because my silence is now sinister. It just is. For a $100 liquor license that you get for a year, yeah, you could have 25,000 more hospital injuries, 2,000 more crashes that are, like, fatal 500. I told you the math last week. This one is about your intent. It will start to be embarrassing when you say certain things in a- It will start to be embarrassing when you say certain things in a couple more weeks. You won't be able to say things like, "I care about the community." You won't be able to say things about the safety of children. It will start to just be so embarrassing. It's already kind of ugly and painful to me to hear what fear-based actions have done us when we didn't have the math, okay? We didn't know before, like, really, how important it was, what we do with what made us. We break things, but we get to make things. The earth doesn't break things. It made us. It made sure that bees don't break. It made sure that things don't break. We need to, like, enjoy the fact that we get to create, break, and redo. My seven seconds is, like, far from all the things, but epileptic children are cured with cannabis, too. Dispensaries...
Beth Abulaffia. Excuse me, Beth.
Do you know her? She's downtown. Yes?
Good morning. I'm Beth Abulaffia, representing Target. You've heard a lot of comments this morning that have nothing to do with what this application is for. This is not about what other products Target sells. It's not about union issues. It's a very discreet request. It's a request that this council make a finding that allowing Target to sell alcoholic beverages as part of its overall product mix will be a public convenience, will be a convenience to the thousands of customers who come to Target every day and expect one-stop shopping, who come to Target and expect to be able to find at this Westwood Target the same products that they're able to find at other Targets, and that includes alcoholic beverages. You've also heard that there are some cutoffs on the number of alcohol licenses that are permitted. That's not accurate. What the law says is that after a certain number, the city is tasked with looking at the individual applicant and deciding whether that applicant and that applicant's business model warrants allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages. And that's what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to look at Target's business, look at Target's operations, look at Target as a community partner, and simply make the finding that allowing Target to sell alcoholic beverages is a convenience to all of the customers who come to Target from all over West LA every day and want one-stop shopping. Target has been a positive addition to Westwood, and we urge you to support Target and to support this request.
Next speaker, Ira Handelman.
Ira Handelman. Handelman Consulting, representing Target. I'm here to bring in the fact that Target is a major corporate citizen in Los Angeles. There's over 15 stores, 4,000 workers. They work very closely with LAPD. Their track record in selling all products is exemplary. And we're not here to talk about product mix. Nobody's talking about telling Ralph's or Whole Foods or anyone else what to sell. Target got its conditional use permit through the process. We went before the Area Wide Planning Commission and won, and some of the opponents say that's not right. But when they've lost at staff levels and they go to the Area Wide Planning Commission and they win, then the process is okay. It seems when Target goes through the process and gets a conditional use permit legally and fairly, then it's not okay. So I urge you to support this request. As Beth said, it's a PCNN. We're not here to discuss labor. We're not here to discuss product mix. We're here to discuss a good corporate citizen in Target, and I urge you to support us in the council office in granting this request. Thank you very much.
Okay. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment on that. We have Mr. Englander and Mr. Coretz.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, I listen to a lot of the comments and concerns from the community, and I take it very seriously when we approve any additional alcohol sales, particularly when there's a proliferation in a community. As the Chair of Public Safety and also sitting on Land Use Committee, I look at these often. And in fact, this body turns more of them down than are approved. And a lot of people will say, "Well, that's not true." Every time we see one that comes, it's approved. Because you don't see the ones that are turned down. They don't make it here. Having said that, there's an extensive process that goes through LAPD as well. There was some mention that there were some stores down the street that weren't allowed. Well, if they're down the street, it's a different location. It could be a same neighborhood. It's a different location. They also look at all the other incidents that are involved, whether it's traffic collisions, DUIs, how and who is buying it, what type of stores, whether it's a gas station, whether it's a single-carry type of sale or not, whether it's a cold beverage or not. All of those things are taken into consideration. And I absolutely have full faith and trust in Mr. Coretz in looking at these issues. I know the LAPD already did. The findings were there to approve it, and it's not from a public safety perspective at all. I assure you that, because I look at these very seriously, and I support moving forward on this and know that the research, in fact, has been done. Thank you.
Mr. Coretz.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Folger from Birmingham High should know that she should not speak out in class like that.
Well, colleagues, I've spent a couple of years struggling with these issues. News to me that I irrevocably committed in 2011 to supporting this. And there are few issues that have given me more heartburn. But there are a lot of things I looked at. Number one, taking into account the cap on overall alcohol sales in Westwood. I believe there's a cap of around seven restaurant alcohol licenses. We have around 20 or so more than that in Westwood Village, and many of the people that are opposed to this particular license were the same people that encouraged us to approve some of those additional alcohol licenses in restaurants where people drink and then they drive home. Clearly a danger, as much as these other choices. Also, some of them have the right to engage in off-site sales as well. Now, we have a few licenses for purely off-site sales of larger establishments generally, and they are clearly much easier access to alcohol than Target would be. Target is kind of a pain in the ass to shop in unless you're there for a large number of purchase of items. I think the number of people that will actually go there to buy alcohol and leave will be virtually none, if not none. So I don't believe that this will be anything but a completely ancillary use. I believe it will have no direct impact on the community, or I wouldn't do this. And the West LA Area Planning Commission agreed with me. It's not an easy commission to get things through. Obviously, the residents and community that are opposed weren't happy with that, but that was their decision, and that weighed heavily on me as well. It's also difficult for me to have UFCW in opposition. I've worked so closely with UFCW for decades. Every time there's a strike, I've been there at supermarkets all over the Southern California area in support. And I've marched when there have been strikes averted, like the last one. We worked together on Proposition D, medical marijuana. I was the lead person pushing that on the council, and I think that will help a lot of patients get through difficult times. We've done a lot of other things together, but this happens to be one where we disagree. And coming in just a couple of days before an already extended period and asking us to make this change, I think, is a difficult one. So I'm going to support the applicant's request, as difficult as it is. In response to community concerns, I have asked Target to limit their hours slightly for alcohol sales. So they have agreed to no later than 10:00 PM for alcohol sales on regular business days. They've agreed to this condition, and Target and myself will be submitting letters to the ABC requesting these further limitations be placed directly on their alcohol license. So it's been a difficult issue, but this is where I am. It's obviously not a political decision, because I would trade the Westwood community at UFCW for Target in a heartbeat. Politically, I have no connections to Target whatsoever, and obviously, close connections to my community and to one of the labor unions that I've been the closest to for decades. But this is where I believe the right decision is, and I'm going to ask for an eye vote.
All right, Mr. Coretz. There's no other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Fourth with an item. Next item.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment.
General public comment right now. Thank you very much. Miriam Fogle, you're first. Public comment.
I heard about our former mayor receiving a nice retirement from the Lasers Fund, which is, right now, we're having a very hard time getting the funding necessary to keep it going for our retirees, you know, the employees of the City of LA. I don't know how Villarosa was able to buy off getting his retirement from Lasers. I'd like to know how much he's had, from his assembly term in office, how much he got, how much he raised, what the amount is, because it doesn't say specifically how much he had to buy back to get his retirement from Lasers. So that's one of the big things I want to know. We have a lot of things like that that's taking place in the city, that people, they take and buy back and get the retirement, you know, like military service you put in. So getting on to something else here, this is very important. We need to get the connection back to LA with the video conferencing. I don't care how you do it. We need to connect. I need to get back here. We need to hook up. I want to let you know that those buttons that you have there at your tables, Nury, please, my sweet council ladies, you know, it's terrible what they did. They only gave a 30-second coverage at the LA City View. Herb Weston, you need to do something about correcting something like that. Anyway, the buttons automatically vote yes unless you vote abstain. You don't have to vote on an issue. If you don't agree with it, Nury, you don't have to vote for it, okay? Just abstain, okay? If you don't have a position on it, such as this, oh, I'm out of time.
Donna Paraman, thank you so much. Have a nice weekend, Miriam. Bye-bye, Donna.
Anyway, this is a great representative. We need to bring back video conferencing to Van Nuys and San Pedro for Bustiano, and San Fernando Valley needs a voice, and we need it now. Anyway, the bad news, the mayor, it's the Twin Towers of Hollywood, the World Trade Center of the West. Mayor Garcetti and our city council, the environmental studies really have got to be done before this project gets over. The Twin Towers of Hollywood has to go or be modified. The World Trade Center of the West, 230-story buildings near Capitol Records, and will dwarf Capitol Records a landmark. That was supposed to be tall at one time. Now it's going to look like a little ant. The streets are too narrow for the big developers. My friend who lives, my old boss who used to live in Hollywood told me that. And the city council and the mayor, this is not progressive, it's destructive. Mr. Garcetti dropped the ball. What's to stop the terrorists from attacking the Twin Towers of Hollywood, our World Trade Center of the West? We don't need developers buying our city council or the mayor. Will even the buildings be filled? Will it help Hollywood in any way? Will it help Los Angeles in any way? I don't believe so. So, and we have to remember, San Fernando Valley matters, but we can't have a voice until we bring back the video conferencing back to Van Nuys. Let's make the center, Van Nuys used to be very important.
And they have meetings every month.
And have meetings every month. We have to have it every month. Every other month, it's very, not every other month, because it's very confusing. I forget which month you're here and which month you're not here. So, you know, we need to fill it up with speakers. We need people out there. We need to calm down and speak and tell what you feel in the valley and advertise it.
Candido Maris.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Candido Maris, proud representative of the 12th District and someone who has been in love with Van Nuys for over four years. With me is John Camaro, Van Nuys neighborhood council person. Mr. Piper, would you please, would you stop my time?
Yeah, hold the time, Sergeant.
This kind of interruption has to stop.
Miriam, come on, Miriam. You didn't learn that at Birmingham High. Come on.
Thank you, Mr. President. With Jim Piper, who is with St. Elizabeth Roundtable, and Mr. Dan Dantone, who is with the abatement program for the 6th District. And so, we're here today to welcome all of you members. We hope that you'll come back again every month or every other month you're here. And to Ms. Martinez, congratulations. Our prayers are with you. We hope that you succeed, because if you succeed, Van Nuys will succeed. You made promises when you came to our meeting. We hope that you'll keep them. We'll work with you. We'll make sure we can do everything we can to make you successful, because if you're successful, then we stop the neglect that Van Nuys has had for the last 10 years. And so, you're right, we need to go to work, and we're doing that this morning. We're working to feed some of the people in our community and some of the homeless issues that we're dealing with here. And the other thing you talked about was women. We need more women in this council. Not that I don't like these gentlemen, but I think the women add a certain perspective, and they're great to work with. We had a great woman by the name of Monica Venevidas, and we would like to submit this to you. We did this over a year ago. Monica Venevidas, if she was here today, if she had been born in this time, she would have been in this council today. So I'd like to submit this to you. This is a letter from the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, where we had asked that the Van Nuys Delano Park be named, just the ballpark, just a plac place in her name. There's no one that has done more for this community. And I hope through the time that you'll get to know her and that you'll understand why we have a great love. We submitted 1,350 signatures for her. So we're looking for you to succeed, ma'am. But, you know, we'll criticize and we'll stand up if we think something's wrong. But God bless you. May you have a successful two years.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Fogle, remember, Ms. Fogle, please did us disrupt the meeting. You're warned. Thank you, Miriam. John Walsh of Hollywood, California.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I have an email from Mayor Garcetti. He wasn't here. I want to read it. He says, "Congratulations, Ms. Martinez, Nury, for being elected to city council. I wished I could have been there today to congratulate you, but I'm packing my bags for my weekly trip to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I instead sent in my place a mayor from El Salvador. Thank you. Yours truly, Mayor Garcetti." Okay. As far as adding Wi-Fi, we have someone here on the council who wants to add Wi-Fi. The Wi-Fi doesn't work here at the city council. It doesn't work here in San Fernando Valley. It doesn't work at the libraries. It doesn't work anyplace else at City Hall, and you want to spend $14 or $15 million so it doesn't work throughout the entire city? Okay. Oh, incidentally, I want to finish by saying, interject heartfelt condolences to Councilman Labonge on the acute family, his recent acute family loss. Kevin James, the mayor, the mayor's pinup boy, he used to be right-wing, now he's left-wing. He is like a zebra. We have no idea where or where he's going to be. Now, yesterday, oh, excuse me, on the 31st, according to Crime Mapping LA, there was an assault, a criminal assault, a deadly assault on someone in Hollywood. And guess what it is according to Crime Mapping LA? An LAPD officer. But congratulations, city council, and congratulations, LAPD. If you can't kill crime in Hollywood, at least you can kill the coverage of crime in Hollywood. And we just wanted to know, everybody, that the Millennium Earthquake, we're going to go out there and dig the trench ourselves to see if there's a fault. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Arnold Sacks, Arnold Sacks of Lenox, California. Arnold, come on up, Arnold.
I love Candido, you know? He does so much for me. I think...
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. No, it's still morning. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. It's been noted that the quote, "A house divided cannot stand," has been attributed to Abraham Lincoln. I bring this up due to an editorial that appeared yesterday in the Daily News, Daily Breeze, regarding Mayor Garcetti's upcoming negotiations with the DWP and their unions for their contracts. And I bring that up because in a story from June 23rd, it's about Maria Elena DeRazo, who absolutely spoke on Wednesday at the city council. She and her late husband formed the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy back in the mid-'90s. Another story from May 2013 mentions, and this was right after the municipal election, stated that the mayor's wife is a prodigious, and I'm quoting here, prodigious fundraiser for the new alliance, for the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. A house divided... A house divided cannot stand. His wife's a fundraiser for the new alliance that was formed by Maria Elena DeRazo, who backed, who was that, John Walsh? Wendy Gruel. That being said, it'd be interesting about the discussion. Then another thing, and again, it comes back to the newest sworn-in council member and her discussion, Clean Streets Act of 2008 that was brought up by Councilman Busciano a couple of months ago. Action taken by the council on March, on April 16th, council action establishing regulatory requirements in the public right-of-way for bicycles, which means sidewalks. So you have the Clean, you have the Complete Streets Act of 2008, which was passing Governor Schwarzenegger's, whatever you want to call it, which regarded bicycles.
All right. Next week. See you later. Sharon Brewer. Sharon still here?
You!
Followed by John Grogan, if that's correct.
Sharon Brewer, public comment. I want to thank all of the council members to show, for showing up at Van Nuys City Hall, and I hope this will happen every time you come out, so that we know that we're actually being listened to. I also have a question. Where's the mayor? I find it unacceptable that he did not show up, especially since his office is just down in the hall, to congratulate the new CD6 person. I live in CD3, but it's unacceptable that he couldn't come or somebody from his office to congratulate you. I also have, want to speak on the questioning of a Public Works Commissioner on issues not relating to the Public Works Department's job. The example has to do with immigration reform and the Dream Act. Do you think that if a commissioner needs support from city council members, and they know the council member's position on the question, they will answer against the council member? I don't think a commissioner or anybody should be put in that position. And basically, we're told to stay on the agenda and the item, and that the council members also try not to go off subject. The other thing is city council meetings in Van Nuys City Hall, they need to have valley issues on the agenda to get maximum attention and attendance. You're only here every other month, and the thing is, you don't have a lot of turnout because there's nothing on there. The closest is CD5 over the hill. The other thing that I wanted to talk quickly about had to do with CD14 and the factual basis stakeholder definition that's going to be coming to you guys. I think that what the city council needs to be looking at is that the problem in Eagle Rock Neighborhood Council probably had to do with CD14's position on the marijuana dispensaries. Thank you.
John Grogan, please. Followed by Bill Zide. Is Bill still here? Thank you, Bill. You're next.
Hi, council. As you know, gas leaf blower use within 500 feet of a residence has been banned in this city since 1998. I'm here to discuss the total lack of enforcement of this law. It's been the biggest quality of life issue for my family. Since moving to Woodland Hills about three years ago, my efforts to stop the use of these machines in my neighborhood have failed. The primary enforcer, the LAPD, hasn't helped at all. Neither has the Bureau of Street Services. I understand the city services are tight, so give me, the citizens, some role to stop these machines. My suggestion is to amend the street services leaf blower reporting policy, so it's similar to L.A. Animal Services nuisance dog barking policy, which would go like this. Complaints are sent to the city. The department sends a notice to the leaf blower owner, homeowner. If the problem persists, I send another letter, and the department sets up a hearing between me, the resident, and the violator. This policy would go a long way to give me some control of my quality of life. The Street Services Division wants to make this the, quote, "the cleanest and greenest large city in the world," unquote. I need some help here. What's the next step I can do? My councilman is Bob Blumenfeld, and maybe we can talk further.
Thank you very much. There's his deputy there, John, will help you right away. Bill Zide, thank you, Bill.
Okay, I hope I have more than 18 seconds, but let me try this. I'm a board member of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council. I have another member here, and I'm here just, Councilman Blumenfeld denounced earlier this week that he would file a motion with the ITA in exploring the feasibility of Wi-Fi citywide. We support that fully and applaud this. In fact, the reason we're here today is that Hollywood Studio District, we have a program that we've allocated funds for that has been supported by now Mayor Garcetti, but formerly Councilman Garcetti and Mitch O'Farrell, instituting free Wi-Fi for our neighborhood. And we would hope that it would move forward, but after two years, literally more than two years, we find ourselves somewhat stalled waiting to move forward. Now, we were told by our contact in the city attorney's office that they were waiting until the new council, city attorney, and mayor were installed, and that's good and well, but we had a meeting in December of last year with ITA Dunn, an L.A. city attorney, stating that we would become the pilot program for this, and yet, almost eight months later, we are still waiting. One of the greatest divisions in this country between rich and poor is access to technology. This is specifically true with computer technology and Wi-Fi. And Hollywood is the most diverse area in the country. I worked for the U.S. Census, so I can say to some degree with confidence that this is true ethnographically, topographically, and demographically. HSDC is at the heart of Hollywood. We would hope that you would help us move forward, and we would like a meeting with Councilman Blumenfeld and with Mitch, who's already supporting, to help move this forward after two years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sid Medusian, is Sid here? Sid? Did I pronounce your name correctly?
It's Sid Maxudian.
Maxudian, sorry, Sid.
Thanks. Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Sid Maxudian.
And ladies, and ladies now, that's yesterday's gone. Ladies and gentlemen.
Congratulations, Martinez, and hopefully you will serve adequately and honorably for your constituents. Now, I came, I drove very far, and I came in for a specific reason, to address Mr. Huizar, but I see that he left. I'm representing merchants in downtown L.A. at the 600 Court Circle, which are about 11 merchants who are involved in restaurants and cafes. They were established about 27 years ago. There were some zoning issues, but for 27 years, the city, the council, the street services, and the law enforcement did not do anything about how they served their food on the tables and the chairs that they were on that alley. All of a sudden, there's an investor in downtown by the name of DeLijani. Isad DeLijani passed away, which was the senior father, which helped the city tremendously. But apparently, his young son, Shahram DeLijani, is taking a very harsh route in this matter. I was called in to help voluntarily as an advocate. I do not belong to no one except to those 11 families who are working day in and day out to stay afloat. Every day, the street services are being called by Shahram DeLijani and his enterprise to send Gary Harris and his team to come and to harass and to move the tables and chairs, which now are on the sidewalks. Mr. Huizar is a friend of DeLijani. They both have a vision. They also have to understand that. This cannot go on continuously by harassment of an old establishment who has the bread and the butter and the backbone of the downtown alley. I was in close contact with Huizar's deputies. They asked me to bring the parties together. Plans have been drawn two years ago, but two entities, is it possible to take a minute?
No, it's not, but it's possible to meet a deputy real quick, so we're going to sign a deputy to talk to you. Go over to the ropes. Sergeant, will you assist this man? And I'll get a deputy over there right there. Rick Nightgill, anything to report? Or you just want to say have a good weekend?
Yeah, Rick Nightgill. My family owns an apartment building over in North Hills where, Ms. Martinez, I'd like to see you about this, because we have a problem. And I had a tenant that her kids decide they can't use their keys, they lose them, so they break the screens and get in. No problem, except in the lease thing, it says that you are responsible to pay for them. Okay, they signed it. I come back, they said they want to get it fixed. I told them it had to be, they're going to pay for it, yeah. I went to get them, I asked for the money, they didn't pay. Okay, so I didn't put the screens on. So they just said, well, I'm going to call the housing department. So they called the housing department. He came out, but the problem is, is that I turned around, was in for surgery. Why, he came out and they gave me 14 days to answer the request. Well, I had surgery, I was recuperating, and I didn't answer it. So that turned around and put it delinquent. So I go down there, I appealed it, paid the $126, that's non-refundable, as you passed the rule a few, about a couple, three years ago. And so I turned around and I paid the money to have a hearing. I turned around and went down, I talked to this one gentleman, he says, oh, there should be no problem. I get a, he had 10 days to answer it, the person that was in charge. He denied it. So I go down there and ask the gentleman, and just what happened, the gentleman that I talked to earlier, and he put down on his notes for him to turn around and when the hearing goes, to come and talk to him, because he heard the whole story that what I had. So when it came down, and he says, well, he denied it, well, he was in his grounds to do that, because the address is right and so forth, but now I turned around and went down there, and he says, if it would have been me, I would have accepted it. He even put down on the notes for this inspector to come and see him, to talk to him regarding what I had. I had a letter from my doctor and everything, and he turned around and says, well, he'd come and see me or nothing, so it stands. I don't, you can't go talk to anybody else regarding this.
I'm sorry to hear that. But here we got now is Helen Murphy. If you want to see me after the meeting, I'll try to give you some advice. Helen Murphy.
I'm Helen Murphy, but I really didn't want to talk. I noted that on the card, but since I'm here, I will.
Oh, I'll give you an award if you don't want to talk.
No, that's okay. Anyway, I want you to bring back the Van Nuys access, and then also, try to have, if you do and when you do, try to have something from the valley on the agenda, because usually there's never anything here. It might be on the Wednesday previous, you know, prior to Fridays, and then it's hardly ever on your valley one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. William Casman, William Casman, William Casman, Carota Hills. We noted file William's name. We have Mr. Tomassien, Hollywood's media district, was he the gentleman in the red shirt? So we note that. We have Al, I want to say it correctly, from the Arlita Community Council, Al. Please correct me, I want to say it properly.
Al Piantnida.
Thanks, Al.
From the Arlita Community Watch Dogs. I'm here to say about, something about the wonderful park projects we got going on in Council District Strick in the northeast section. We have a brand-new skateboard park going in, the Arlita Sun Valley Skateboard Park. It's going to be called the Southwest Skateboard Park presently, until we can name it, but it's going to be the largest skateboard park in Los Angeles. Also, it's going to be the first street-type skateboard park. And the reason we're having it that, we surveyed the people and the kids, and we want to keep them from jumping over the fences at schools, jumping on the rails, so it's going to be beautifully set up with rails and steps, so the kids can do the real skateboarding they like. Also, we have a brand-new park in Arlita that is part of the mayor's 50 park project. I've been waiting some 20 years for this park to happen, and these are just wonderful things. Also, our park in Arlita, Branford Park, which is the oldest park, one of the oldest parks here in the valley, has just been totally refurbished. And the reason behind all of this here, I've been a member of the, since 2008, of the PUP-K Kids for L.A. Committee, and I'm representing Council District Strick, and these are just such wonderful things that just make me tingle to see where our money is being well-spent. Also, three years ago, I had a dream of making a nature parkway over on Devonshire Boulevard, but it took a lot of teamwork, and the funny part is, Nury then is our school representative, was a major supporter, and also Philippe Fuente, who was then our assemblyman, was a major supporter. And the reason behind this is the diabetes, the high blood pressure, the obesity, and then when I surveyed the people that are walking, I got people that were very ill, who are now walking on a daily basis. And these are the things we're going to need here in the valley. I'm hoping to work closely with Nury, our new representative, and Philippe from District 7. We got projects that we can do together, so I appreciate, and I'll be talking with your refs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Sarah Stevens is the last card today. Public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. I appreciate that. I'm hoping to not have to, I want to support you. I want to take pride in all the things that we do as a community. You are our voice. You are the checkbox. You are action enacted. But what's going to happen, I will keep speaking, and in two years, three of those district seats will be occupied with people who are only going to vote based upon a website of registered voters who will go on and click, 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 and that person will represent absolutely to the, whatever bill they want, propose whatever, they'll do that. We'll take it over seat, seat, seat at a time, because that is what is good and pretty and pretty. So jump in or shamefully, because the youth in two or three years are going to be ashamed of actions now, or they will be proud of us, period. Like, I know how to work remote, my mom can't program a VCR, because I know the actions right there instantly. The youth are even more aware of information, access, intent, action. They like to do cool stuff. They don't, in Oak Park right now, the parents have gathered, and they're reading all of round-up spray and the chemicals that are being sprayed in school districts. Out here in the valley, parents are doing things for the good of their children. That's what is going to overtake you if us potheads who no longer want to smoke pot recreationally, but would love to have salves that could possibly rid us of keloids, or that maybe one day my mom might not succumb to Alzheimer's, who knows? Infrastructure's a joke, you can't talk about it anymore because you don't look a hemp. $500,000 were instantly lost in taxes when you shut down 400 dispensaries. $500,000. So talking about $27,000 and stuff, like, it's okay to have not, like, to have not understood that we respect you enough to, like, check, check.
Thank you very much. That completes the public comment today. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for post-nary referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, members? Mr. Busciano?
Followed by Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. This weekend, San Pedro will be celebrating 125 years with a Summer Fest street fair kicking off tomorrow. Live music, rides and games, great food, arts and crafts, family fun, free admission, a craft beer tasting booth as well, and a chance to win, that's for you, Mitchell. Or Englander. A chance to win $500 as well. 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., a community entertainment stage. Everyone is welcome. Come and join me in celebrating San Pedro's 125th birthday. Thank you.
All right, now, Council, when you take the San Pedro freeway, you get off and you go where exactly? Tell us where exactly you go.
Exit Gaffey, turn left on Gaffey there, and turn another left on Seventh Street, and it puts you right in the heart of downtown San Pedro.
Very good. Mr. Bonin of the Great 11th District.
Thank you. Venice doesn't need a birthday to have a great weekend party. There's going to be, Venice Neighborhood Council is putting on a picnic and a barbecue tomorrow from 11:00 a.m. all afternoon at the Oakwood Recreation Center, which is just off Lincoln Boulevard and California Avenue. Also, I wanted to report that I had dinner last night with my friend and predecessor, Councilman Emeritus, Bill Rosendahl, who is looking absolutely fantastic, is feeling wonderful, sends his love and says hello, and wants everybody to know that he's doing just great, 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 great.
Send our love to him. I hope he's not watching Channel 35, but if he are, Bill, I love you.
He has been, so hello, Bill.
All right, all right. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind my colleagues and the audience, of course, that we are having our seventh council district squaring in tomorrow at Hanson Dam at the brand-new Ranger Station at Hanson Dam. It begins at 5:30, program at 6:00. Looking forward to having you all there.
Congratulations. Have a great time. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to announce on Monday morning at 9:00 a.m., there's going to be an event recognizing the 101st birthday of a famous world figure, Raoul Wallenberg, who was known among other things for saving as many as 100,000 people in the Holocaust. And so, we have a statue in his honor that's being refurbished, is located in that intersection. There'll be other activities. There'll be other activities as well.
What's the location?
It's Beverly Boulevard in Fairfax.
And Raoul Wallenberg Square was the first square named, Mr. Coretts.
9:00 AM.
Mr. Coretts, it was the first square named when we started naming squares. Mr. Yaroslavski did that so many years ago and continues to be a very special day. Any other announcements?
One more. You know what? I'd like to, and we're going to have a memorial mass for Tom's brother, Christopher Labonge, who passed this Monday, colleagues, and you're all welcome. We'll be sending information to your schedulers this Monday, 10:30, at Mary's Star渡渡 Parish in San Pedro. Hope you, the whole, the entire city family, the public's welcome. So this Monday, 10:30, at Mary's Star渡渡渡 Parish.
But I appreciate that, great Joseph. And I just want to let you know, every day's a blessing and take, I know your times are all busy, but just take moments to bless your family and your friends because they're so precious. Seeing other, other announcements. Ms. Martinez, we really welcome you again. Let's have a big hand for Nury for the sixth district and fighting for the sixth. Do we have any adjourned motions? Mr. Buscagno?
I have two. Colleagues, I asked today that we adjourn in memory of Clem Pascarella Sr., who passed away peacefully at home surrounded by friends and family on July 28th. He was 66 years old. He was born November 27th, 1946, in Norwalk, Connecticut. He moved to San Pedro in 1949, attended Holy Trinity, Furman La Suena, and graduated from San Pedro High School in 1964. He went on to receive his bachelor's degree from Long Beach State University. He worked for Hughes Boeing as a manufacturing manager and retired after 40 years of service. He's survived by his loving sons Clem Jr. and Nick Pascarella, grandchildren Jillian, CJ, and Gianna Pascarella, siblings, friend and Patricia Pascarella, and companion Norma Pionbino. He leaves behind a large, loving family, which includes aunts, uncles, many cousins, nieces, and nephews. He was preceded in death by his parents Fred and Ray Pascarella. Rosemary will, service will be held tonight, 7:00 PM at McNerney's. A funeral mass will be offered tomorrow at Holy Trinity Church at 10:00 AM, followed by interment at Green Hills Memorial Park. Secondly, colleagues, sad that I today adjourn in memory of LA Fire Department Captain Mario Arthur Martinez, who passed away July 25th. He was born October 9th, 1956, in San Diego and was a 54-year resident of San Pedro. Mario graduated from San Pedro High School in 1975, where he was a varsity starter and MVP on the football team. After graduating, Mario pursued a degree in fire science at Harbor Community College. He went on to join the fire department as a firefighter in 1980, later becoming a paramedic in '82. Because of his skill and devotion to his job and to helping others, he was promoted to captain. The Los Angeles Fire Department was his life, that he's graciously served for 33 years. Mario loved to travel, whether it was skiing with his son or heading to New Mexico on his Harley-Davidson motorcycle with his friends. Mario survived by his son Eric Martinez, his beloved dog Sasha, siblings Mark and Teresa Chavez, Melinda Martinez, Cynthia and David Fee, Sergio Martinez, and Monica Martinez, his nephews and nieces, and also his brothers and sisters in the Los Angeles Fire Department. Services was held this morning at Holy Trinity Church with interment at Green Hills Memorial Park. May Captain, LA Fire Department, Mario Arthur Martinez, may he rest in peace. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much, Joe, and all members. On that, Mr. Sedia.
Yes, Jose Francisco Mayorga was part, am I on? Was part of the diaspora that we talked about earlier. As we all know, in the '70s and '80s, Central America was riff in revolution, and he was part of that. He was a very learned, self-taught man. He was a member of the Sandinista Front. He played a role in that victory of that movement. He then came to Los Angeles in 1986 and settled in the MacArthur Park area, Westlake area. He was part of a community of people who then became activists, and we see them all the time. What we don't see is that they have family, that they have friends, that they have jobs, that they have come to Los Angeles to realize their hopes and aspirations. Well, San Francisco was one of the most notable activists that we would see at all the functions, at all the time, supporting every cause. He was part of various groups, and not just for the Nicaraguan community, but for all Central Americans, Latinos, and Angelenos. And he played a major role in helping fund and maintain the Clinica Oscar de Rometro. And he was a big activist in the Dream Act and the driver's license movement. He was always visible, omnipresent in his work, but he also had a family, and a family that will miss him much because he was such a great leader. His wife, Berta, his son, Lennon, his other son, Darwin, and his daughter, Lithuina. You can see by the names of his children what a well-read man that he was and self-learned as he was. And so I ask that we also adjourn in the memory of this great Angelino.
Thank you very much. We should remember him as well. Members, I ask to adjourn in memory of Jerome Williams, 47 years old, got knocked out by a battle with leukemia. He was very involved in the Toluca Lake community on the Toluca Lake Neighborhood Council. We ask to adjourn in his memory, and he is survived by his daughter and son. I ask to adjourn in memory of Jerome Williams, gone too early, too young at 47. Every day's a blessing, and it's great to be in Van Nuys. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good weekend, y'all.